All right, wow. Hello. Yeah. Okay. Welcome, everybody. Lots of people out there. Today is Wednesday, the June 12th City of Edina Planning Commission meeting. It is the year 2024. I'll get into the rhythm. I missed the last meeting, so here we go. Like most Planning Commission meetings, we welcome you and we thank you for being here, whether in person or tuning in remotely. Your participation, curiosity, and feedbacks vital to this process as we navigate change together, specifically regarding the ways in which we'd like to use our land. It's important to know that your feedback, however you sent it in, whether it was through the engagement website, bettertogetheredina.org, or through email, got to us, and we will have reviewed it and considered it tonight before we make our recommendations. We have one public hearing on the agenda, and when we get to that, I'll give you some of the instructions, if you're tuning in remotely, with how you can jump into the queue. If you're quick, you can look at the screen now and call that number, get that access code and password in, and then you'll hit star three when you're ready to speak, but we'll get there in a little bit. All right, so without further ado, we will call this meeting to order. And roll call.
Commissioner Alkire.
Here.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Here.
Commissioner Hanneman.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Next order of business is the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. Welcome a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting minutes, as well as the special work session on May 22nd. We'd welcome a motion to approve both minutes unless there are proposed changes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, however, there are one or two changes to names that were in the minutes that were sent to us, which Liz knows about and will change. They're just small spelling errors, so she's going to change those. So motion to approve with the changes Liz will make.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, next, we have the community comment period of the agenda, and that is your opportunity for whoever is here in person to speak about any matter that is not on to tonight's agenda. And you can come up to the podium, state your full name, address. You have three minutes to speak, and we'll let you know when your time is up. Hey. No one behind that screen. All right, we're safe to move on from that one. And now we have the public hearing portion of tonight's agenda. Like most public hearings, there is an application, whether that's a resident, a developer, or it's the city itself, or one of its departments. And staff will have done their research, put together a report for us to read through and consider. Staff will then provide a presentation to us. We'll go back and forth with some questions. And then if there is a separate applicant, we'll have a chance to let them present to and have some questions back and forth again. And then we'll open it to the public hearing, and that's when, if you're here in person, you can speak about this matter. Or if you're tuning in remotely, that's where you can type in, or you can use your phone and call in to participate. After that, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll turn it back to the planning commission for us to deliberate and make a recommendation for approval or denial. So with this one public hearing, it is for a conditional use permit and variance for South Metro Public Safety Training Facility at 7525 Bremar Boulevard. And go away. Emily.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. The South Metro Public Training Facility is requesting a conditional use permit and a building height variance from 20 feet to 27 feet 9 inches to build a 5,536 square-foot tactical center training facility at 7525 Bremar Boulevard. The subject site is located within the larger 402-acre Bremar Golf or Bremar Arena parcel. The property is zoned R1 and is guided as open space in the comprehensive plan. The proposed building is located within the existing fenced-in area of the South Metro Training Facility, located just south of the fire training tower and the main building and range. The site for the proposed building is not visible from any public right-of-way and is located where the South Metro Training Facility is currently using the site for K-9 training. The proposed building will provide indoor tactical training space and indoor space for vehicle stop training. The center will be used for training that involves indoor and outdoor scenarios and on-scene vehicle arrival training. The proposed building height is 27 feet 9 inches. Tonight, the additional height is being requested to go above the allowable 20-foot height requirement due to the nature of the building. The training center building needs a minimum interior clear height of 20 feet to be able to create two-story scenarios inside, whether they're training for residential or commercial scenarios. The training involves going up and down stairs and includes all elements, or all different elements of stairs, and that additional height allows for overhead observation and teaching from above. The pitched roof is also important and included to help move air to the peak of the building as air exhaust points are at the high point of the roof, and this will help facilitate heat removal, but also help aid in the removal of smoke and other items that are used in those trainings. The proposed building material is metal siding or corrugated steel, and the proposed building is similar to other buildings on the subject site on the South Metro Training Facility and then within the larger Bremar parcel area. Circulation of the site and site access is not changing with the additional building. There is associated parking that's being built with the proposed building, but overall, the site will lose two parking spaces, and this is all within the controlled access area of the site that's currently all fenced in. And there is no additional parking requirements with this application. All setbacks requirements are met with the application, and setbacks are measured to the greater parcel lines and range from setbacks that are roughly 400 feet to 4,000 feet. Tonight's request for the conditional use permit and building height variance. So per the city code, a conditional use permit should not be granted unless the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the use will not have undue adverse impact on governmental facilities, utilities, services, or existing proposed improvements. And staff believes this criteria is met. The project is located within the existing fenced-in area that's utilized by the South Metro Training Facility Joint Powers. The area will be used for first responder training, and the existing utilities are adequate to serve the proposed use and will not have adverse impacts on other governmental facilities, services, or utilities. The second criteria is that it will generate traffic within the capacity of the streets serving the property. Staff also believes that this criteria is met. The proposed project will not generate any additional traffic and will be used by existing members of the facility. No additional traffic is anticipated with the additional training facility building. The third criteria is that it does not have an undue adverse impact on public health, safety, or welfare. Staff does not believe this project would have any adverse impact on public health, safety, or welfare. Access would be through existing access points, and the proposed building is located within the existing fenced-in area that's currently being used as K-9 training space. The fourth criteria is that it will not impede normal and orderly development and improvement of other property in the vicinity, and staff believes that this criteria is also met. The proposed development would enhance the training opportunities of the property and will fit well within the site. The proposed use is allowed within the R1 zoning district, and the building is not visible from any public right-of-way. The fifth criteria for a conditional use permit is that it conforms to the applicable restrictions and special conditions of the district in which it's located, and this project meets all city code provisions with the exception of the accessory building height, which is the reason why they're requesting a variance tonight. Publicly owned public safety buildings and accessory buildings that are greater than 1,000 square feet are conditional uses in the R1 zoning district. And this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is the last criteria. As you're well aware, Minnesota statute and Edina codes require that certain conditions also be met to grant a variance, and staff believes that the variance criteria is also met in this situation. The criteria to grant a variance is that the application must relieve practical difficulties that prevent reasonable use from complying with the ordinance requirement. The height of the building at 27 feet 9 inches is required to be able to create two-story residential commercial training scenarios and to allow for teaching from above in those scenarios. And the pitch of the roof is important and included to help move air to the peak of the building, to help air exhaust points, and help facilitate heat and smoke removal. The second and third criteria is that the applicant, or the request, will correct extraordinary circumstances applicable to the property but that are not applicable to other property in the vicinity or within the zoning district, and that there are circumstances that are unique to the property but not common in every similarly zoned property. And staff believes that this is reasonable and unique due to the nature of the public training facility, and these circumstances are not applicable to other R1 zoned properties. The last criteria to grant a variance is if the variance will alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and staff believes that granting the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The subject property is currently used for a variety of public safety and first responder training, and the size and scale of the proposed building is similar to other existing buildings on the surrounding site and the Bremar parcel. The location of the building was chosen to be near a wooded hill to provide additional screening. And with that, tonight's staff's recommendation is that the planning commission recommend that city council approve the conditional use permit for the tactical center training facility to the campus of the South Metro Training Facility and the associated building height variance from 20 feet to 27 feet 9 inches at 7525 Bremar Boulevard, subject to the findings and the conditions that are listed in the staff report. I will note that staff added a fifth condition here tonight, and that is number five, and that's compliance with the sustainable building policy as applicable and with coordination with the sustainability division of the city. And with that, I can answer any questions. There was not any Better Together comments, but a link was included in your packet. And Scott Neal, the city manager, is here tonight, and he'll have a brief project overview, and he's also here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Quincy.
Thank you. Thank you for being so efficient. Just a question on the height. Does the height go up to the peak of the roof or to the stack?
The highest point. So not the exhaust pipes off the top, but to the highest point of the roof.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
All the question, or do you have more? Is that it?
Well, I think you've covered it pretty well. I think number five was the sustainable building policy, because I was thinking about that, actually, with the corrugated steel, you know, in terms of, I'm guessing this building would be used all year round, wintertime, summertime, and I know that type of steel generates a lot of heat. And so I'm pretty sure it is insulation and, you know, meeting all kind of energy requirements for the building to operate effectively. Then you also covered, I think, in the report, screening, because my concern was the reflectivity of the sun coming off of that building onto the street, onto the highway. With that kind of material, it can be very reflective sometimes, and depending on the angle of the sun, you know, drivers coming up on the highway might, you know, get blinded by it. But could you talk more about the material, the reflectivity of it, and do you think that's going to be an issue at all, shining light back into the highway?
I can't speak specifically to the reflectivity, but I can speak to the building's location. And you can see on the screen one thing, or one of the reasons why the site was chosen within the South Metro Training Facility site as a whole, is the location due to the wooded hill. And so it sits, you can kind of see on the screen here, it sits beyond that hill. You can also see that the proposed building will be just south of the fire training tower, and that isn't visible from this angle or this location either, so it is quite hidden from the public right-of-way. So I don't think reflectivity would be an issue as far as any sightlines or blinding people on the highway or anything like that.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you. Welcome, city manager Scott Neal, to the stand. Full name and address? No, I'm kidding. Take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. My name is Scott Neal. I'm the city manager in Edina, and I'm here in a dual capacity as the city manager and also as the chair of the board of the South Metro Public Safety Training Facility to ask for your support for the conditional use permit and variance for the new project at the South Metro Public Safety Training Facility campus at 7525 Bremar Boulevard. The South Metro Public Safety Training Facility operates under a joint powers agreement comprised of the cities of Eden Prairie, Edina, Bloomington, and the Metropolitan Airports Commission. I've been on the Training Center Board of Directors since the Training Center opened in 2004, and I've been the chair of the Training Center since 2011. The Board of Directors of the South Metro Public Safety Training Facility is requesting the conditional use permit and building variance from 20 to 27 feet 9 inches in order to build the 5,500-square-foot tactical training center facility. The purpose of the proposed facility is to expand the training capabilities of the facility so we can meet current and future training needs of the first responders that serve our emergency medical and our law enforcement needs. The project adds a new building to the Training Center campus. The proposed tactical training facility will provide indoor flexible tactical training space and indoor space for vehicle stop training and also for other vehicles that don't, excuse me, for also other training opportunities that don't involve vehicles. The proposed training facility is located within the fenced area, as Ms. Dalrymple indicated. It's in the 402-acre Edina Bremar Park. The building is being placed on a section of the site that's currently underused, an expansion area for the Training Center's K-9 training program. The building will meet an immediate need, however, that's more important to the people that use the building. The site of the new building facility was chosen because of the wooden hill and because of the wooded hill, and also because it does kind of block off any view from the public. This project has gone through already a significant level of review before reaching the planning commission tonight. The project was reviewed and endorsed by the city councils in Edina, Eden Prairie, Bloomington, and the Board of the Metropolitan Airports Commission. It was reviewed in quite some detail by the capital investment committee, so the Minnesota House of Representatives and the Minnesota Senate, and ultimately approved by Governor Walz twice. The Minnesota, excuse me, the project received two rounds of grant funding from the state of Minnesota's bonding bills, once in 2020 and again in 2023. Both grants were for $1 million. The Training Center staff and consultants are working closely with the state's Department of Public Safety on design and construction standards for the building. We expect the $2 million in state grant funding to cover the entire cost of the building. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yeah? Commissioner Padilla.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you. How often is this facility used?
The current facility?
Or, yeah, and potentially the proposed facility as well?
The current facility is probably used six days a week by one, by one or more of the partner organizations.
Okay, and then the proposed?
Yeah, I would suspect less than that, because that's going to be, there are some activities such as the firing range, where you can go as an individual, training, and do some training by yourself. There probably aren't going to be the same kind of trainings that will happen in this new building, so I would suspect that's going to be less, probably once or twice a week, if I had estimate.
And then one of the conditions is about in coordination with the city forester. So are there any changes to the tree? Will there be trees removed?
We have conferred already with our city forester, and there might be trees removed, but not very many, if any, right?
There's not any trees within the fenced-in area, but I know that they have had to do in the last year. I don't think there was any tree removal. It was more brush removal on that wooded hill area.
Okay, so I did have questions about the cost, but I think you answered them, that it's fully, will be fully funded by, through the state grants. And the joint powers agreement that governs this?
Yes.
How long does that agreement go? So I assume there's no changes to the agreement. You're just looking for another building here.
That's correct. Right. So the city of Edina serves as what I would call the managing partner of this joint powers authority. We provide the facility's support, the IT support, the HR support. I'm the chair of the board. We divide up the costs equally, but we perform some of those administrative and overhead tasks on behalf of JPA.
And are the three cities, they share the training? I mean, so do all the three cities get an equal amount of training, or the training is distributed, or each city decides what training they need? Is that how that works?
They do, and then there's a big meeting. Each police and fire department has a training officer. There's a meeting that happens a couple times a year, where they look out into the future and they divide up their times so that people get the right amount of time they need for their training. Yes.
And this is done in conjunction with the post board?
It is not done in conjunction with the post board.
Okay, separate. Okay. Thank you for all the clarifications.
All right.
Thanks for joining us tonight. Just a couple of quick ones. Who actually owns the land, first? And second, is this a unique, the proposed new facility, is that unique in the metro? Or is it filling a gap that these three cities have compared to other cities in the metro?
The land, I'll start with your first question. The land is still maintained and owned by the city of Edina. The building, we operate and own together as a JPA. The building that we're going to build, is it unique? I think there are a couple like this. When we built this facility in 2004, it was one of the first kind of metro-area public safety training facilities. Now there's a number of them around the cities, but this facility, I think there might be another one on the east metro in a Cottage Grove-Woodbury kind of JPA, but this is, this would be unique to our side of the metro.
Thank you. Any questions this way? Cricket's good. No questions from me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, as mentioned, so we will open it up to that. First, we will just get all the right information up on the screen, so anyone who might be tuning in virtually can get in the queue to speak. So hopefully up on the screen, there's some info. If not, please call 312-535-8110. Enter access code 2631-891-3533. Password is 5454. And press star three on your telephone keypad when you'd like to speak. So we'll give you time to do that now, and then we'll open it up here in person for anyone who came and would like to speak about this public hearing. Please come to the podium. You have three minutes. State your full name, address. We'll let you know when your time's up. Anyone here that would like to speak? Okay, cool. So that's probably been about 20 seconds for people that are getting in the queue. Maybe we'll give them another 45, and then if no one's there, we'll close the public hearing.
That sounds great.
We're just talking about who's going to sing for the elevator music next time. So maybe you, Scott? Okay, nice. Sound like a good baritone over there.
So it has been past the 45 seconds, and nobody is in our room to speak, so I believe it's safe to proceed.
All right. Look for a motion to close the public hearing. Find someone.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Public hearing is closed. Thank you. All right, now we'll turn it back to the planning commission to deliberate. Any comments? Any motions? Would welcome them.
Were you about to speak, David? Sorry. Okay. Let's see. Seems as, you know, looking at the staff report, the conditional use permit requirements are sufficiently met, variance requirements sufficiently met. Really don't have much to add to that, to be honest. I think it's pretty, pretty cut and dry. So, you know, full support, and I think this one's pretty easy.
I think probably most of us are thinking the same thing, so I'll try a motion and then see if there's more discussion that comes from that. So a motion to recommend the city council approve the conditional use permit with a height variance subject to the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just want to clarify one thing real quick. So the sustainability, sustainable building condition was added during the presentation, but it wasn't technically on the staff report we were given. So that would, of course, be added to this motion, of course, right?
Yes, and if it's included in the motion tonight, it will be included in the staff report for city council.
Mr. Chair, Member Day. I can tell you that one of the conditions of the grant funding we've received from state government is that it is that it's built to the B3 standards, and so we're working through that with the Department of Public Safety right now. That's, when I said we're working with them on design standards, that's what it's for.
Part of it, too.
So, yeah, we're supportive of that, and we'll comply with that certainly.
Okay. Commissioner Alkire, would you welcome that modification to the?
Absolutely. Do we want a new motion or just take that as amended?
Yeah, take that as amended. And I guess look for a new second.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Congratulations to the cities and all the other departments for this going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. All right. Now on to, yep, an empty rest of the agenda. So we have no other reports or recommendations or anything like that, so it is now time for chair member comments. So this is your time to speak if you got something.
I want to know how I get the assessor that assessed 402 acres at $1 million to come in to assess my property value.
Deal. Me, too. Anything else? Anyone?
Yes, Claire.
Is it possible to look into how we could have the dial-in password code number be less lengthy? Having had the opportunity to dial in myself, it is cumbersome and certainly a lot of digits to get through. So I just put that out there, if that's something the city could think about.
Great comment. I think they can look at that, for sure. Yeah. Commissioner Alkire.
I went to the open house last night briefly, so I'm wondering if Commissioner Day would just give us a top line on how it went.
Yeah, sorry. I had so much fun and just kind of just, you know. So we did have our open house for Lincoln Lundary last night from 5:30 to 7:30. I was, was able to tag along on the bike ride or be one of the tour guides for the bike ride, so that went really well. We had good attendance. I thought it was impressive turnout. Claire and David both showed up. We had a couple of city council members also show up as well. Residents gave a lot of good feedback. I saw a lot of activity on the boards that we had had posted, idea leaves, et cetera. The tour that I was on went really well. You know, we explained kind of the function of the small area plan, and, or a smaller area plan group, should I say, saying, you know, we're not buying the land and dictating how it's going to be used, but, you know, we set a vision and work with the city to meet that vision. The popsicles were very good as well, provided by Mend. Mend did a fantastic job setting up boards that they had, informative boards, really organizing the event in total. And, you know, we have the Better Together Edina site for Lincoln Lundary, in case anybody's watching right now. People can contribute there. A lot of people, you know, were, saw that for the first time last night, and it's, you know, I think even some residents commented that this is better organized even than other smaller earplugs where they didn't have that page set up and maybe this kind of engagement and everything. So I think we're getting better as we go along. Yeah, exciting event and hope to keep the momentum going. Yeah, exciting event and hope to keep the momentum going.
Great. Sounds awesome. Yeah, Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. One is just like a general observation. I know it's been pretty rainy these last couple weeks, and I know there's a lot of soccer games in the parks and everything like that, and I don't know if you guys noticed, but there's a lot of mosquitoes. And so I know the city does a lot of spraying and trying to manage that, but I don't know if city manager Scott has any, you know, anything that the city is doing to, I guess, manage the bug situation when it comes to outdoor activity.
Actually, most spraying in in Edina and throughout the metro area is done by the mosquito control district, so a separate level of government. They have they have a schedule that they use, and we should be in it right now if they're hatching and out like they are. We can find out when and why they haven't been here already and when they're coming.
Great. Another point, I know before the meeting, I know we were kind of chatting before about the traffic situation. I know on France Avenue, right at 60th and France, yeah, I think there's some temporary stoplights that were put up, which is helpful, right? It kind of helps manage the traffic in and out. I don't know if you have any comments on how long that's going to be there and like what the project is exactly in that section of the city.
60th and France?
Is it temporary? Putting it a permanent light, it's only temporary?
It's it's temporary. It seems like it's on a set of wheels on like a frame, so I think it's not buried in.
It it may be part of the detour work that's going on there and associated with the BRT stations that are being built on France Avenue. Most of that work is going to happen in June and July, so I think they may be diverting it, maybe their detour, actually, they're diverting people to Xerxes and 60th in that area and then up to the cross, up to the cross town? Is that what you're asking, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I'll encourage you guys to drive down France. You'll see it. I think it's cutting off traffic going south on France. I think it is directing it away. But, yeah, I just saw it went up like maybe a week, I don't know, like a half week ago.
You're going to see those those stations being constructed, starting on the south end near this cross town and then all the way up France Avenue, all the way up to where they make the turn to go in on Excelsior to go into the city.
Gotcha. My last one here, I know a lot of kids have birthday parties in the parks, and again, with the rain, the the brush grows up pretty quickly. What is the expectation, like if you book a park, is it then the park director and team would mow and clear the area, like to prepare it for that booking, like, or is that just on a regular schedule and you just happen to book it on a really grassy time of the schedule?
The day before.
Well, right, and and we're experiencing the same kind of weather delays that everybody is experiencing with mowing, right? You get, we have a lot of people that we employ to mow. We've got great equipment. We've got good people that are doing it, and when it but when it rains and it's wet all the time, it's going to be difficult for them to carry out. And the answer to your question, it's they're on a sequence, and that's the that's the way that that service is provided for the most part.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, when we were at the small area plan meeting yesterday, all this talk of parks made me think of something. I met a lovely resident and her son. That is their neighborhood park. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it has a basketball court in the kind of middle of the parking lot, such that you couldn't throw a basketball without hitting the cars, I mean, the hoop dumped straight on. So I encouraged the son to put the pin on the board and give that feedback to the staff as part of the small area plan. He'd like the basketball court moved, but just since we were talking about parks, I thought I would add it seemed like maybe a smart practice, just so somebody doesn't run into a kid or the basketball hurts a car, so just thought I'd share that very odd placement.
What is their?
It's in the parking lot. It's like they put the basketball up to use the pavement of the parking lot as the court, so if the cars are parked and your ball goes into the hoop, it'll land on the hood of somebody's car.
Okay. It's not really a city park then, right?
Correct. It is more a parking lot with an oddly placed basketball hoop.
Yeah. We we run into that quite a bit, actually, and cul-de-sacs, you know, the neighborhood will put a basketball court, put a basketball.
But this is in Walnut Park.
In Walnut, so it's in, it is in the park.
It's in the park. It's the parking lot for the park.
Okay.
It doubles as the basketball court.
Okay.
Just thought I'd mention, seemed like a small thing that we could do. I know we're doing a lot of works on our park. I think council member research said that we're replacing a lot of the parks equipment to me while I was there because it's can't be replaced and maintained anymore, so while we're looking at our parks, I thought I would throw that out there.
Okay, thanks.
Since we're grilling the city manager tonight.
Yeah.
We're right on the Nine Mile Creek Trail, and there is no bike rack readily accessible at Walnut Ridge Park either, so we were all parking our bikes against the street signs and whatnot, so that'd be a good addition to the park as well.
Bike trail with no bike.
Right, right, right off the.
Oh, you're taking notes over there.
I am, I am.
Lot to remember.
So that's a situation where that trail belongs to the park district, the Rivers Park District, but the park belongs to the city, so there'd be some collaboration, I'm guessing, about when when and how we would install bike racks that serve the trail.
I'm just going to add one thing, you know, this is arguably the best time of the year for a lot of people, just getting out and about, and inherently it's a time for construction. We have all this rain. It it adds an extra element of danger to it, too, and I'm sure everyone heard the sad news across the border with the drowning of a little boy in Hopkins. So it's just, you know, it's a great time of year, but when it's normal and healthy, there's extra dangers as part of it, so I watched, I guess, the the final, I guess, discussion with the captain who kind of shared the update afterwards, and a lot of the community was just asking what they could do next time to help prevent such a tragedy, and really one of the main takeaways seemed to be, you know, as a community, just if you see something out of the ordinary, to say something and do something about it, and likely no one did. No one saw something likely, but it's just that reminder, you know, even to like how we use our land, the more we get people out and about and we build better places where people are in community more, you end up having eyes on things more often. So we love our lakes, our streams, our rivers, but they can get dangerous when we get a lot of rain, and so it's just a terrible tragedy, and hopefully out of that, it just brings that community closer together, and same with ours, because we have the same situation running through our city, so it's definitely been on my mind since that happened, and just hope that whole community is reeling and doing doing well on the heels of it, but a lot of it does impact the way in which our land is used and how you keep people together and keep places safer, so figured I'd mention it. Any other comments? This will turn to staff. All right, so one final item adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Countless.